All right, I'm going to open the Clark County Council meeting for July 6, 2021. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation, which will be given today by Pastor Dwayne Shockley of Bethel Church in Ridgefield. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Pastor Shockley?
Chair O'Brien, I do not see Pastor Shockley logged into the meeting this morning.
Okay, well, let's have a moment of silence then. You may be seated. Would anybody like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we ask for public testimony on consent and separate business. Is there anybody who would like to give public testimony on consent and separate business this morning? I don't see or hear anybody, so let's move on to separate business. And we'll have item number one under separate business, Emily Zwiezik. And Kathleen probably?
Good morning, Council. This is the formal fund balance policy that we discussed a couple of weeks ago in the REIT2WORK session. We're just bringing it forward for your formal adoption at this time.
Are there any questions of the council? We did have a session on this. If there aren't, I would entertain a motion on that.
Move to approve? Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve item number one under separate business. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item number two under separate business. In local agreement, review Southwest Washington workforce investment area along the Cowlets and Waukeaham Counties. We have Lindsay Schaefer presenting on this.
Good morning, Council. So for those of you who aren't familiar with this, there are the 12 regional workforce areas within Washington State. These were created under federal and state law. What we now today have is the federal WEOWA, which is the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. And under that, we have these 12 regional workforce areas. Since the creation of these workforce investment areas, we have partnered with Cowlets and Waukeaham County to form the Southwest Washington Workforce Investment Area. And the original interlocal agreement that created the Southwest Washington Workforce Investment Area is expiring. And so they are proposing a new interlocal agreement under the same terms. The only thing that has changed are the dates. And so if the council approves, we would continue under the interlocal from 2021 to 2025. I've included some information here about what the workforce investment area does, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any questions about that. But there's nothing about renewing the interlocal agreement, or I should say entering into this new one, that changes any of the parameters of what that group does.
Are there questions of the council? Okay, and I know that we have, I think there are at least three of us on this council right now that have participated in this workforce committee. I think Council Bowerman currently sits on that. So I would entertain a motion if there aren't any questions or comments.
I move approval.
And I was a little slow on the button. I have one quick question, Madam Chair, if I could.
Go ahead.
As it relates to item number four, you know, we have a continuing challenge on how to sustain our park maintenance and everything from, well, basic maintenance to cleanup. And I'm wondering, do these contracts include any work crews for our park? Or could they?
No, and that's, I think, kind of a, it's a question that I've actually heard a lot. When I worked in Olympia, I worked with these as well. There's, I think, a sense that these are the same as the places where somebody might go if they're unemployed and looking for job assistance. And that's not what the Southwest Washington Workforce Investment Area does. Really, what they're doing is making sure that we have the economy locally to have the high skilled, high wage jobs. They're working with businesses, they're working with education to make sure that we have the skills training available to meet our economic needs and that we are making the environment for businesses better to support that growing economy. So it's much more of a macro level than an individual micro level helping somebody to get a job.
Okay, I hope that answered your question, Counselor. So we have a motion. I'm waiting for a second.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve item number two under separate business. Is there further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to item number three under separate business. Ahmad Kwame and Jeff Schnabel?
Good morning. Good morning, Counselors. This is Jeff Schnabel, Interim Clean Water Division Manager. This item is to authorize the county manager to execute an interlocal agreement between City of La Center and Clark County to perform some microbial source tracing work for the city. I have a couple of quick background slides if we could scroll down just a quick moment. There we go. Thank you. So this is in response to some ecology testing that took place up in some East Fork Lewis River tributaries within the La Center city limits a while back, where they found some elevated bacterial levels. La Center followed up with some of their own monitoring and kind of confirmed those levels, and then reached out to Clean Water as a potential assistance to collect some water samples for identification of DNA presence specifically for dogs and human at the same locations that they have been working. And so they're going to use these data that we collect to trace and eliminate those bacterial sources in that stretch of some of those tributaries on the East Fork. Next slide, please. So between conversations that Ecology and City of La Center had, they identified the need to eliminate those sources as they are fairly significant when it comes to the amount of loading that they seem to have. Clark County, of course, has the technical knowledge to do this kind of work. We've done similar efforts out in Whipple Creek, as you know, and up in the East Fork Lewis River on our own. So this will be a fairly small project. City will reimburse the county about $7,700 through this year to complete the project. And then if for some reason we need to do some follow-up, we'll follow up with them and extend for another period. So I think that's all I have. If there's any questions?
Are there questions from the council?
One question? Jeff, I was wondering, does the $7,754 that the county will be reimbursed, does that cover the entire cost?
It does. That's a full reimbursement. Yep, that's staff time as well as the shipping and the laboratory fees and everything. Yep.
Thank you.
You bet.
Madam Chair, quick question. So Jeff, when we're talking about, I mean, I know we're talking about today just this, this interlocal agreement, but just to kind of go down a little bit of a layer here. When we talk about identifying sources of this bacteria, both human and waste, is that part of also looking for failed septic systems that might be leaking in and around the river there? And then at that point, is that going to be the county's responsibility in terms of working with homeowners if there's a problem with their system?
That's a great question. And yes, it does, it does have to do with looking for those source areas, which could be, in the case of human waste, it could potentially be a septic leak issue. I believe that La Center, in this specific case, is going to work directly with Ecology within the city limits to deal with that, although they do have some support from, from Public Health as well. And then, of course, in areas outside, in unincorporated Clark County, for sure, we will be working with, with Public Health. And they're, they're the ones who do most of the follow-up work on that.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
And Madam Chair, if I may?
Councilman Adji?
So Karen Bowerman already asked the question exactly that I was going to ask, so I'm not going to re-ask that. That was a great answer. As to Counselor Olson's comment, you know, the Conservation District, the Poop Smart Program being laid out by Ecology and Conservation District all get to some of these issues, including animal waste, domestic pets, et cetera. There's a belief by Ecology anyway that even a dog feces in our watershed is contributing greatly. So this testing will, will help considerably. The testing, I just wanted, when you have a location that you're going to test, how many actual samples are taken? Is it literally just one sample? Or is it a series of samples from co-located locations? What, what's the protocol?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. It is, it is multiple samples. And the reason we do that is these are kind of transient issues sometimes. And so it, it just gives us a better opportunity to capture what's going on. The DNA testing specifically that we're doing is a little bit more expensive than, than your typical, you know, bacteria sampling that we do, which is why you see kind of multiple rounds of sort of confirmation sampling before we come in with the DNA testing. Because that, we don't like to take a ton of samples, but in this particular case, we're doing three outings. And we do a bracketed approach. So we have a sample kind of upstream of where they found the issues and a sample downstream. We take those concurrently three times, so a total of six samples on three sampling events. And that gives us a pretty good, we'll do it in different conditions of flow and, and gives us a good opportunity to capture what's going on. So I hope that makes sense. That helped, Counselor?
Thank you.
Awesome.
Any other questions? If not, I entertain a motion then, please.
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve item number three under separate business. Is there further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you. Now, moving on to item number four under separate business, Ahmad Kwame, Kevin Tyler, and Scott Sawyer will present or at least be available.
Good morning, Council. We're going to be asking for three actions. One will be to adopt the master plan. The other one is to authorize the county manager for approval of the contract for professional services. And then the last one, authorize the bubble core extractor sign supplemental agreement to expand the duration of the contract. There's a little bit more information about this project. I'll turn it over to Scott Sawyer and Kevin Tyler to give a little more update on that project. Kevin and Scott?
Thank you, Ahmad. This is Scott Sawyer, Capital Project Manager with Public Works. As Ahmad indicated, we have multiple different things that we're asking for approval this morning. One thing I wanted to point out, just to give you a little bit of background about the work that's been done already on this project, is in Phase One, which was the development of the master plan, it included a pretty extensive public outreach process to try to get and identify as much of the desired elements as possible for the park. There were many, many different recommendations made. And of course, we have a limited space here, so we did the very best we could to try to incorporate as much as we could with the space that's available. Included in this outreach process, we had stakeholder interviews in which we contacted over eight local sports clubs to kind of determine what their needs are and what their desires would be for the park. We also held an online survey in which we received 600 submittals, over 600 submittals, which was very, very good. We're very pleased with that. We sent out 7,600, over 7,600 mailings and also did news releases. And then we also had a community open house at Prairie High School, in which we had well over 100 people come and join us and provide input into this project. Hopefully, you've received a drawing of what the park is proposed to look like. I just want to point out a few highlights, just so you understand some of the amenities that have been identified for the park. We're proposing a natural grass rugby and soccer field, also a synthetic turf soccer field with the ability for a Little League practice and game on there with, with lights, tennis and pickleball court, basketball and footsall court, restroom facility. We also had the opportunity to speak with the Glenwood Community Church, which is located just to the south. They've invited us to connect to their existing disc golf course. They would love to have the public join them in utilizing that facility. So we have the opportunity to design our pathway to connect to that. We also are proposing an all-inclusive playground. We have a trail and bike path, which one loop on the outer outskirts of the loop is approximately a half a mile. We have quite a bit of open lawn space, picnic shelters, and then a number of viewpoints to the Gaddis Well and Natural Area to the east. So the second phase then would be the authorization of the county manager to sign the RAPIDS and Engineering Professional Services Agreement, which will allow us to go ahead and put together the construction documents and proceed with the bidding of the, of the project. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, if I could.
Are there questions of the council?
Madam Chair?
Counselor Olson?
A couple of things. One, Rebecca, I wonder if you, if there's a way to get to this diagram or design of the park that's on our website. It's beautiful. I think it'd give folks a better idea of kind of what we're talking about here, but what's the timeline on, after we get this piece done here in terms of when we think we're going to get this project completed and this park ready for folks to enjoy?
So at this point, we anticipate about a year and a half of design and right away, and then being in construction in 2023. And so we're hoping that we can complete that, you know, depending upon weather and how things go by, by the end of 2023, if at all possible.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, this has been a long time in the works for sure. And one of our last community parks, I think, in terms of our commitment with the MPD levy. So thank you.
And Madam Chair, if I may?
Councilman Adji?
Thank you. So as much as I I really want to continue keeping all of our consultants gainly employed, I'm just hopeful that someday that we can, I know that these parks can't be cookie cutter, but to cut down on the million and the half million dollar cost of designing parks seems like an extravagant expense to me. I like the idea that perhaps the state will give us a grant from Recreation and Conservation Office. But, you know, I, I know we don't have the capacity in-house to design these parks, but what would it take for us to do that? I know we only have a few more parks at least planned right now. But the, the high cost of the design, just, it's always an irritant to me to see, see that.
Good morning, Counselor. Kevin Tyler with Parks and Lands Division. And I think it would take the hiring of landscape architects. We don't currently have landscape architects on staff in Public Works, so that would be one of the things that we would need to do. And, you know, I think that's been looked at in the past, but, you know, since the split with Vancouver, we just haven't, haven't done that yet, to my knowledge, really, really dived into what it would take to hire landscape architects. But that's one thing, right? And then I, I don't know if Scott could speak to the, the cost of this contract in comparison of the total, total project budget. I think we're up around $7 million. So we're roughly at about 5% or 6% of the total total project cost in terms of what this contract would be. With, and I don't know how that compares with other parks that we've designed recently, but, but Scott's team may be able to help answer that.
Yeah. Kevin, I'm sorry, I can't really speak to the other parks. I have not really been involved with those. But as you indicated, the anticipated cost on this one is just going to be over $7 million. And so the, the half million, as Counselor identified, is, is what would be anticipated approximately for, for something of this nature when you're going to use consultants with their overhead rates and that type of thing. So we feel that the team that we have is a good team. They were involved also with Luke Jensen. And so we know that they have a good experience with developing parks. And we have faith that they're going to put, put a good park together, similar to how they did with Luke Jensen.
And also, Counsel, I just wanted to add, I share your opinion. And it's, a lot of times when we get the consultant estimates are very high. This is something I've been wanting to work on for the last two years, but it's part of our mixed years work plan for both roadway projects, clean water projects, and parks projects. I'm going to be looking at trying to minimize or lower our dependency on consulting. There are some items that consultant has specially, which we don't have in-house, that might be. But other stuff that we could do in-house, we want to do that. So I'm going to be looking a little bit closer in our capacity, what's available. What would it take to do some of this project in-house? Because we do have a very long list of projects that we could do. And the nice thing is that if we do some of this in-house, that we can use some of the dollars to leverage and get more grants and do other projects that we wanted to do. So it's been in my mind for a while, and that's something that we're going to be working a lot more closely to minimize. We're still going to have some need for consulting for special items, but if there are some stuff we can do in-house, that's my, my goal to achieve that. And also help us to do a better job of estimating. Those are the two items that we're going to be working as part of our work plan for 2022.
Thank you, Ahmad. That perfect discussion, everyone. Madam Chair, may I ask an additional question? It's unrelated to the previous one, but related to what I asked earlier. What's, you know, what do we do to work with other organizations, from Veterans Group to the Juvenile Program, to our Corrections Program, probation, as well as the local work crews that we get from Larch and elsewhere? Do we have, are we, do we have a robust program to get its part of, to get our, our low-cost maintenance crews out there? But it, because it benefits, it's part of rehabilitation, whether it's at heritage farming, but doing landscaping, getting people out in the parks from our, from our correctional, those incarcerated or part of their probation. Do we have a robust program just to kind of get to the sustainability issue of all of our parks?
That's a great question, Counselor. We, we do have an agreement that you just authorized as part of the consent items with the Washington Department of Corrections to do some of this type of work on properties that the county owns. So is it robust? It's probably something that we could do some work to build upon. We also use the district court corrections work crews on all of our parks projects or parks properties as well. So like I said, could it be more robust? Yes, it probably could be. But we do use both of those two organizations for the labor crews, and they're very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Counselor Madji. I think, I think it's excellent that we do use some of this labor in that way. I think it's actually good for them, as well as good for the county and the taxpayers of the county to be able to use that labor for this. Any other questions or comments of the council?
Madam Chair?
Counselor Lentz?
Yes, thank you. First, just thanks for bringing this forward. I'm glad to see this, this moving. It's good to be getting closer to fulfilling our commitment for this park levy. We're almost there. So, and this park is going to be fantastic. I, I would be ready to make a motion, but I'd like to propose one small amendment, following the notion that this, you know, in the end, this is a lot of, a lot of taxpayer money. While the, the design is a small portion of the full cost, we should do our best to monitor all of the costs. So for the third element of this, this proposal, this requested action from staff for authorizing the Public Works Director to, to sign the supplemental agreements, I'd like to propose that that is with county manager approval, just so that we can make sure that if anything, we can contain the cost for this project from beginning to end. So a little extra oversight as we're, we're trying to manage this project. That'd be my proposal.
Madam Chair, I would support that. I don't know if you want to make a motion and then we can amend it, or?
Sure, if we don't have any other questions. I know I was kind of starting to move ahead, so I didn't want to cut off any other questions or comments, but.
Are there other questions or comments prior to moving on?
I guess I'd like to hear from the county manager whether she wants that change.
I would be supportive of it.
Okay, are there other questions regarding this proposal here? Not, not, Counselor Lentz will wait till the motion to do that, so. If not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve this item under separate business with the amendment that item number three authorized the Public Works Director to sign supplemental agreements. We add with the approval of the county manager.
Second? Is it not item number four that we're talking about? You're muted, Counselor. Counselor, you're muted.
Sorry about that. It's item number three within the staff report. So the, the third part of the staff report.
Yes, thank you for that, Clark County. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to have an amended motion or a motion within amendment to include the third portion of the staff request that the county manager give oversight and approval before moving on with the third portion of the, of this item. Is there further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. The motion passes. Thank you for that. Moving on to item number five under separate business. Ahmad Kwame, Susan Wilson, and Rob Fluke will present.
Good morning, Council. We'd like to ask council approval for a resolution to submit applications for the Public Works Trust Fund. We're planning to use this fund for 99th Street Improvement, which would be from 94th Avenue to 117th Avenue. This will be a low-interest loan, that's 0.94% interest rate from Public Works Trust Fund. And I'll be happy to, if you have any questions about that. This project was identified as part of the adopted 2021, 2026 transition improvement plan that you adopted last year.
And Chair, this is Kathleen.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I would like to clearly specify a recommendation to the council that this is only for the application of the loan. There is a deadline this week for the application. However, I would be asking staff to do a full financial analysis before any spending of this loan, if received, be done prior to spending any of the loan. But simply due to the application deadline, I'm supportive of Ahmad's request for applying for the loan. But I want to ensure that we're doing our due diligence and doing a complete financial analysis before we spend any.
Okay, are there questions of the council?
Madam Chair?
Counselor Olson?
Just a quick clarification, Kathleen. So if we were to approve this Just a quick clarification, Kathleen. So if we were to approve this item as it's presented, would that encompass what you're asking? It doesn't provide any other authority or just, just an application for the Public Works Trust Fund loan, correct?
Yes, this is just the application. It's a, the resolution is required for this application. And it's my understanding from staff that if we were awarded, it would probably be the end of August, beginning of September.
Okay, so we don't need to change anything in terms of the staff report or what a motion might be to approve. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Clarifications? Okay, if there aren't, I'd introduce a motion.
I would move to approve. Do we have a resolution number that we need to reference?
Yes, the resolution number is 2021-07-06.
Okay, so moved.
Second?
Second. It's been moved and seconded to pass resolution number 2021-07-06. Is there further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Counselor Wilson.
Just one comment. I would say it's nice that we're actually eligible to apply for Public Works Trust Fund loans again, now that we're compliant with our growth management comp plan. So I'm happy to see that we're going to be able to potentially take advantage of this, so.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. I'm moving on to open public comments. We're going to move to public comment, and if you have a comment you would like to share, please use the raised hand icon on your computer. If you're calling in, please press star three to raise your hand. Once called upon, you will have three minutes. Please introduce yourself for the record. Do we have anyone to speak?
I don't see any raised hands, Chair.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the public hearing. Emergency Budget Supplemental Number Three, 2021 Emergency Budget Supplemental Number Three. And we have Emily Zwiezig and I'm sure County Manager Kathleen Nato.
Yes, so I'll do just a quick overview. As a reminder to the council and the community, RCW 3640 allows for supplemental budget appropriations as needed throughout the year, the budget year. It has, I meet one of the specific situations where a, where the budget supplemental request can be included such as unforeseen situations, safety and welfare and/or hinders ability to fulfill statutory obligations, labor contracts, legal settlements or other judgments and unforeseen revenue sources that are associated with the expenditures. Today's emergency supplemental is the third one for 2021 and in direct response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Therefore, it is in direct response for the safety and welfare of our community as well as unforeseen revenue and expenditures. There is a total of two budget requests today. Both are budget neutral, and so we're just asking for budget capacity for the, both the revenue and the expenditure. The, the first one, the county was received or has recently been awarded a grant by the U.S. Department of Treasury to contract with local service providers to implement an emergency rental assistance program. The council did approve the submission of the grant application. This is funded under the American Rescue Plan Act. The total grant award is approximately 11.6 million. And again, this is requesting the budget capacity and revenue for the expenses. The second budget request, Community Services is requesting budget capacity for grant funding for expanding the outreach motel vouchers, housing assistance and shelter capacity. This was previously approved by the council on June 15th at a council meeting. And this cost is approximately 15.5 million. Again, it's just approving the revenue and expenditure capacity. I do know we have some, some employees from Community Services as well as our Budget Director on as well, if the council has any questions.
Does the council have further questions on this? We have had a work session regarding it, but I, I would, I, I want to let the public know that, that we've been informed about this particular supplemental, but I would ask if the council has any questions of those that either the manager or anybody attending here to clarify anything. I don't hear either. So with that, I would entertain a motion. The resolution is number 2021-07-02.
Move to approve.
Oh, second. Is this, is this a hearing? Do we need to take public comment?
Thank you for that. Yes. Thank you. Is, is there anybody who would like to speak for public comment? Again, you can hit the raise your hand icon on your computer, and if you're on the phone, please press star three. And you'll have three minutes to speak.
Chair, I don't see any hands raised, and I will confirm that we have not received any written public comments for this matter as well.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that reminder, Counselor Wilson. Sorry, moving ahead too fast. But did you also second it?
It is.
Okay, all right. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to pass resolution 2021-07-02. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to public hearing number two, amendments to the Clark County Code 40.510, and we have Emily, Emily, Amy Wooton, excuse me, and Susan Ellinger outlined. I don't know, Kathleen, if you're going to give a presentation? No, okay.
Yeah, this would be Public Works.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, council and staff. Can you hear me? This is Amy Wooton.
Yes, we can.
Perfect. I'm here this morning representing community development. We are asking council's approval for an ordinance that would update Title 4510, which is the procedure section of the Title 40 Development Code. Very recently, oh, change the slide, please. Thank you. Very recently, staff discovered an inconsistency within the code regarding the use of regular mail versus email when sending documents during the preliminary development review process and subsequently developed some questions regarding those procedures. Most sections of the code state that documents need to be mailed, which has historically been interpreted to allow the use of email instead of regular mail. However, a few places in the code specify that email can be used only if the recipient gets consent. Because email is specified in these sections, a question arises as to whether staff can interpret the word mail to also allow email. It seems that this procedural inconsistency became highlighted during COVID stay-home orders. After internal discussion, it was decided that the use of email unnecessarily created a potential avenue for appeal. So in order to be in compliance with procedural requirements, staff has reverted to hard copy mailing and has had to double up by also emailing all preliminary decision-oriented correspondence, including all final pre-op reports, fully complete determinations and preliminary and final decisions. Although this procedure is code compliant, over time, it proves to be unduly consuming of staff time and increases copying and mailing costs. To provide a sustainable solution, staff is proposing a compilation of language changes to the code for your approval today. Staff has also included a correction to a Scrivener's error in Section 4510-03-OD6 that was identified while staff was compiling the code changes to the mailing segment. So what's changing? In general, staff proposes to change code language in Chapter 4510 that refers to mail to a more general send. Certain sections will require more specific changes. For instance, all of the sections related to pre-application final report, which currently requires attendees of a pre-application conference to sign a register during the in-person conference. The register allows all attendees to specify how they want to receive the final report by either email or mail and allows participants who were not listed in the application materials to be included on the distribution list. Remote work has changed this practice because now we're using a red web platform for meetings. So the proposed provisions to the existing language will require that final staff reports be sent to all meeting attendees. These proposed changes will not affect mailing procedures and requirements that are specifically outlined in other chapters. Slide. Thank you. The change to the Scrivener's error cited in 4510-03-OD6A in regards to notice of final SEPA determination will correct the citation reference which currently refuse, refers the user to Section 4510-03-0H. Slide. A section about burden of proof. The section 4510-03-0I is the actual appeal section, so that's the Scrivener's error that's going to be corrected. Staff finds the proposed, proposed code change will positively affect the use of several resources within the Community Development Department as costs associated with hard copy mailing of staff reports and hearing examiner decisions will be reduced with staff time spent in copying paper costs, stuffing envelopes and postage. An additional benefit for applicants is that it would preserve the applicant or appellant's appeal window as delivery of the decision arrives the day of issuance. Next slide, please. Staff has come applied with type four procedural requirements for code amendments put forth in Section 4560-02-0. In accordance with those procedures, we issued a notice of SEPA determination of nonsignificance on May 31st. No comments were received in response to the notice. Prior to this morning's hearing, staff presented the proposed changes to, oh, slide, please. Thank you. Prior to this morning's hearing, staff presented the proposed changes to the Development Engineering Advisory Board and Planning Commissions with both groups reacting generally in favor of the proposed changes. As you can see by the schedule, we are pushing this issue forward with some urgency as this change in procedure has had a definite effect, effect on staff time and draws on resources we otherwise would not be using. We're hoping with staff, with council approval, these changes could be effective by July 16th. Slide, please. I thank council for your time and consideration and available for any questions you may have of me.
I have a quick question, Amy. It's, I thought I heard you say that there could be a request for mail as, you know, in addition to, to sending the email. Did I hear that right? Or not?
I think any time we receive a request for hard copy mail, we would respond in that, in that manner. We're not changing the language in Title 4510 so that hard copy mail would not any longer be a viable source.
Okay, thank you, because I, it just clicked with me, but yes, I've looked at these amendments, so it still could include that. So I just wanted to make sure that if there are folks who really prefer that way, if they can, however, I can see how this would be absolutely great, and I see both DEEVE and the Planning Commission have unanimously approved this. So are there other questions to the council? I don't hear or see any, so I would, I would open it up for public comment if there was any on this particular item. Again, you can hit the raise your hand if you're did somebody speak? No. You can raise your hand, the raised hand icon on the computer or star three if you would like to speak.
Chair O'Brien, I don't see any hands raised, and also just to confirm, the county has not received any written public comments for this hearing.
Thank you. Okay, I would then entertain a motion for ordinance number 2021-07-03.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 2021-07-03. Is there further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Rebecca, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Counselor Lentz.
Aye.
Counselor Olson.
Aye.
Counselor Bowerman.
Aye.
And Counselor Medvigi.
Aye.
And Chair O'Brien.
Aye. Thank you, Kristen. I recognize your voice, sorry. Okay, the motion passes. Okay. Thank you all for your presentations. Are there council or communications at this time?
Madam Chair, I had two I wanted to raise.
Counselor Medvigi.
So I'm not real clear on where we're at as far as other counselors on the CPACER program. I I, I'm assuming that we each had conversations with Lindsay and the modifications to ensure we mitigate or minimize any potential risk of the recording associated with the CPACER program. I, I, so I'm hoping we can move forward with it, and I don't know when the next scheduled event is, but I did want to tell you that I, and I don't know if other counselors had the same communication. I was contacted by the Port of Camas Washugle, and, and they do have people interested in taking advantage. So we have customer inquiries now on the program for, that would result in some economic development within my district. So I'm just wondering, Kathleen, what, when is the next scheduled date and is there uni, uniform support amongst the counselors?
I would have to defer to Lindsay because she did send out a draft ordinance to the council and was following up with you during one-on-ones, and I have not been able to touch base with her. But we can certainly put this on a council time agenda to see if there's any further discussion or edits that the council wants to do prior to putting on a hearing, but Lindsay might have some additional information. And I will follow up with Lindsay, and what we can do is we can put a placeholder tomorrow for council time for discussion tomorrow.
Thank you. The second point I wanted to raise at our last Board of Health meeting, somewhat of a passing comment, but I had commented on the comorbidities related to COVID-19 and essentially obesity and wondering if we could be doing more on that issue. I, I did have some further discussion with not only Dr. Melnick but, but a constituent and LULAC specifically. They've, they are very concerned about education, diabetes, obesity within the population they serve, and certainly there are other groups within the community that are also hard-hit by those two related top topics which have to do with food health. The conversation resolved or point went in the direction of they specifically would like to run their own food bank, which they are to a very much lesser extent right now. I, I did ask Dr. Melnick to look into this further and any other relevant party as far as the, the food bank and the related pantry that we have located throughout the county. So I am hoping that in, with our initiative to set aside money for nonprofits for the American reconstruction money, that we can target funding this specific pantry amongst the many nonprofits that will be competing for this money. But I wanted to raise it because I think it's, it really gets to a lot of issues that, and it would be a wise use of some, some of this money. It would be short-term, just a couple of years. It would be short term, just a couple of years. And during that time period, they could look at different ways to sustain it or even reduce the program after the money runs out. But there would have been such a positive benefit from the educational aspect of it, you know, the fresh produce aspect of it. So anyway, I wanted to tell you all about that discussion and the proposal I've had. I did let our financial director know about it, and hopefully we'll have a placeholder, probably looking at about $100,000 for two-year funding for them to run a pretty robust pantry. In any case, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Other council reports?
Madam Chair.
Counselor Bowerman.
At the Board of the Workforce Southwest Washington, we had a report from a higher education panel that I found very informative because as we look toward the preparation of future employees in the county, this certainly speaks to that. There was a report from Clark College that all classes are remote through the summer, and by fall, they will be hybrid. But there's been double-digit enrollment decline, which they really credit to the issues of childcare and fear of sickness from COVID. Then there was a report from Lower Columbia College where there has been a 14.9% drop in enrollment this year. And it's interesting, though, that they are now offering a teacher education four-year degree as their first four-year degree, and will be offering another technology four-year degree for those who want to supervise in their industry. It was a different report from WSU Vancouver in that, first of all, only half of their students came in as transfer students, which is different than it had been. They went remote in March. However, there have been 1,018 graduates this year, which is their largest class ever. So there's a mixed picture in the higher ed sphere. And let's hope that now we'll be back on track at all of the institutions.
Thank you for that. Any other council reports? Okay, County Manager, do you have a report? Any further report for us?
I have no reports today, thank you.
With that, thank you, counselors. We are adjourned.